We will now begin the City of Boynton Beach City Commissioners Meeting today, Tuesday, February 18th, 2020, at 5:31 PM. Would everyone please rise for invocation by Reverend Lori Durgen of Unity of Delray Beach, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
Let us pray. Loving Creator with grateful hearts, we say thank you for the blessings of life, family, friends, health, work, food, nature, hope, love, faith, and peace. Help us to remember that peace on earth begins in our own hearts, in our homes, in our neighborhoods, in our places of work, our schools, our streets, and in rooms just like this one tonight. Peace begins right here. So we thank you, God, for your wisdom and strength, your blessing, as you guide each one here tonight, those who lovingly serve our beautiful city. Help us, God, to remember that we are all your servants. For this and so much more, we say thank you. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Stephen B. Grant.
Here.
Vice Mayor Justin Katz. Commissioner Matt McCray.
Here.
Commissioner Christina Romulus.
Present.
Commissioner Tye Penzerga.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Informational items by members of the City Commission. Vice Mayor, would you like to begin?
Uh, nothing to disclose.
All right. Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. I have nothing disclosed, but I want to thank the individual who has a white SUV that's parked in my parking spot. Enjoy the park tonight, okay? Because I parked in an illegal parking thing. Thank you.
Commissioner Romulus?
I have nothing. I can't follow that. Oh, gosh. I have nothing to disclose. Just, that's it. Happy belated Valentine's Day to everyone.
Commissioner Penzerga?
Nothing to disclose.
All right. I got a few things to disclose. On February 5th, I was at the Chamber event with Commissioner Penzerga for the ribbon cutting for Prime Island over at Prime Catch. On February 6th, I had business over coffee, met with a couple of different businesses, and that evening went to the Magic Wheels and Special Deals that our Parks and Rec staff threw, sponsored by Joe DiMaggio Hospital. That was a great event, and I'm just very pleased that we continue to do that every year. On the 7th, I attended the Safe Streets Summit, and also that evening I was at the Arts Warehouse for our Sister City presentation of their artwork. On the 8th, I attended the Barrier Free 5K. It did not run, so I will not save my time, and, but it was under an hour. On the Monday, February 10th, I met with the Vietnam Vet Commander and had attended a check presentation from the Bill Tome Foundation for the new Boynton Beach Bulldogs in Cheer, which I'm very much looking forward to them starting this spring and summer. I attended the MLK update, and I want to thank our Communications Department for all the wonderful work that they've done for that event and for continuing the effort of the MLK purpose with monthly meetings, so that we have an amazing one next year. I attended the Transportation Disadvantaged Local Coordinating Board on the 12th, had a meeting with the Central Palm Beach Chamber, and on Valentine's Day, I made my extra special brownies for the bake sale, and it seems that they sold out.
How extra special?
Everybody was so happy that you did that.
There you go. Makes everybody happy. On the 16th, I was at the Gold Coast Band. It was an amazing, and I'd like to thank our Parks and Rec Department again for continuing having that municipal band. Very much looking forward to next year. Also, I believe they have another concert on May 3rd, and so if we could help support them with that information. On Monday, the 17th, I attended a meeting with the Palm Beach Leisureville and Historic Society, and today I had a meeting with the Florida Department of Transportation, and I should be on NBC, Fox, and CBS tonight. So, that is it for me. Any further disclosures from the Commission? Seeing none, moving on to announcements, community, and special events and presentations. Our first is early voting for the March 17th, 2020 Presidential Preference Primary Municipal Election will begin on Saturday, March 7th, 2020, and will continue through Sunday, March 15th, 2020. The early voting hours are from 10:00 AM until 6:00 PM daily at the Yzel Hester Community Center located at 1901 North Seacrest Boulevard. A listing of early voting locations throughout Palm Beach County is available at the Supervisor of Elections website. Due to the March 17th, 2020 Presidential Preference Primary and Municipal Election, the Second Commission Meeting in March has been rescheduled to Wednesday, March 18th, at 5:30 PM. I have a presentation of plaques to express the city's appreciation for those responsible for building the Magic Wheelchair, Valerie Mathieu, Founder, President, Charities of Love, Jeff Cohen, Little Wolf Carpentry, Arthur Laddan, and Ronald Huggins of King Point Woodshop. These individuals transformed the wheelchair of seven-year-old Amar into something magical of a con and throne. So, are they here?
They're here, Mayor.
Oh, wonderful.
If I may, Mayor, just call the audience attention to the monitors. You'll see a picture of Amir. And for those of you who weren't with us in previous meetings, again, what we do is we temporarily convert a child's wheelchair into something very magical. Amir's favorite movie is The Black Panther, and with that being the case, these wonderful, wonderful people converted his wheelchair into the Black Panther Throne. And as you can see by the pictures, they did an outstanding job, and we are very, very fortunate.
I like that one.
And again, thank you very much. We really appreciate what these folks have done, and I think the pictures are pretty self-evident.
Now, we have our presentation of the monthly Town Square Update.
Colin.
Hey. Colin Groff, Assistant City Manager. Going to bring you a couple of updates this afternoon on our Town Square project. As you know, we're trying to do this monthly to keep everybody up to date. I just want to start by saying we've started to bring our employees through some of our new buildings, and they're thrilled with what they're seeing. And I would offer to any of y'all up there at the thayis, if you're interested on a tour, just let me know. We'll get you set up and get you through these buildings. But they're real excited about it, and every one of them had said, told me, that says, "When you come and give an update, thank the Commission for what they're doing for them," because they really do appreciate it. So just a quick update today. Somebody brought up some comments that says, "We haven't done a financial update in a while on Town Square," so I thought I'd start with that, because I think it is important to see where we are on our numbers. You know, I've come here every month and say we're below budget, so now I'm going to show you the numbers to show you that we're below budget, we're under budget. The first sheet is an overall budget that, the first column is what we brought you two and a half years ago of what the draft budget would look like, of what the budget would look like, and then the current budget is where we're sitting right now with the change orders that have been approved and everything else we've done over the last two years. So the current budget is $120 million, 264, 795, of which $76 million, 288, 551 is what we call our public-private funding, which is our private partner who's funding that much of the construction. So our part of that is simply, as you're aware, is just a payment to them on an annual basis. But at the same time, we're still involved in watching where the dollars go, even though our payment doesn't change, we want to know where the dollars are going. So we're watching that. As you go down, and I'm not going to go through all the lists, but the couple of things I want to point out is if you look about the fifth line from the bottom, it says furniture, fixtures, and equipment, and it says city-funded. We had budgeted $3 million for that at the beginning, and if some of you, most of y'all were here then, when we said that was going to have to be city cash, and we were going to have to come up with it. And I just want to say now is we've been able to find savings in the project to cover that $3 million plus, more than that. So it looks like right now we're not going to have to dip into any city money to fund those things that we said at the beginning we would do. So with that said, our current budget, we're sitting at about $117 million compared to the $120, so we are under budget. Now, this is a look ahead. It's not the final number. As everybody knows with construction, the final number comes when you sign the final paperwork. And we're not there yet, but we're getting close. The second slide I want to show you, this is the CFP-funded portion. Again, this is not, the city doesn't make these payments and are paying this. This is CFP paying these bills, but the city does review it daily and does sign off on it and make sure the money's going to the right places. And again, if you look down, we're actually, it's a little confusing, because when we first gave you the budget, we broke up some of the sites, and CFP actually put them together in the same contract. But if you look at that, we started with, our preliminary budget was $76 million with CFP. When they finally got their bonds funded, the bonds came in a little bit cheaper than they thought, so we had $76 million, 288,551 to spend at the beginning of the project for those components. The plus side, what's in green, and this is what I want to show you, this is the savings. CFP did not, this is why you want good partners on these projects. One of the things CFP did for the city is they went out and reinvested some of this bond money, and they've made interest on it, and they've made a lot of interest on it. So we've made about $1.6 million. Now, they could have kept that. They're perfectly, they moved that back into the project for the city. So all of those funds that they've made have come back into the city for our contingency. That's one of the ways we're paying that $3 million without having to dip into our funds, is we're using the money that they're earning. The other area they've earned money is they're doing what we call owner-direct purchasing, which in the state of Florida, you pay sales tax unless you're a government agency or a nonprofit agency that gets their certificate. They went out and did the work to get their certificate, so they're able to buy a lot of the large equipment without paying the taxes, and that's created another $800,000 to $900,000 that they've put into our funds. So that negative, that $2.5 million, is what they've made for the city in the project, which is paying for all that furniture and everything that we needed to pay for. So I wanted to point that out, because I think that's actually really good stewardship on the part of our partners. So some of the things...
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry. I have to stop you.
Go ahead.
Go back to that sheet that you didn't give us the copy of. Go back.
That one? One more?
No, right there. Why don't I have a copy up here, so we can see it?
He literally was finishing about an hour ago.
Yeah. I have copies for you. I didn't get a chance to get to the copy machine to make them.
Okay, okay. I only have a few more weeks up here. I'm going to appreciate copies.
Absolutely.
I'm here, I'm just saying, you know, it's nice to see it on the screen. I like to study things before I walk up there, you know, saying, anybody have any questions? I can ask you something when I'm looking at it at the same time everybody else is looking at it.
Absolutely.
Sir, okay.
You're correct. So just, I just wanted to highlight some of the things we've been able to add to the project through the savings that our contractors have come up with during the project, things that we didn't originally budget for. In the whole site, we've done some enhanced security systems. I'm not going to do it in a lot of detail, but it's really much, when we started this project three years ago, the world has changed a little bit, and through those changes, we wanted to make sure we were up to date on our security. And so some of those things, yes, they're a little bit more expensive, but our contractors have found ways to cover those costs. We were able to add some color LED lighting in the whole site, so we can change it for different holidays, for different throughout the site. So that's going to be real exciting. Unfortunately, there's a little delay on that lighting. The company that actually manufactures it was hit by a virus that everybody knows about, and they've slowed down production, so we're a little bit behind, but we're going to get it in, we're going to get it to the ground and make it happen. The Family Adventure Park, you got, oh, go ahead.
Is this the same company that we're using for the water tower?
No, it's not.
Okay. Making sure.
But the same problems, but no, it's not the same company. No, it's the same delivery-type problems, because there's no manufacturing in the U.S. that makes these things, so they're all made in other countries, and so you're subject to shipping and things like that, so there's a slight delay on that. The Family Adventure Park, we went over that a couple of months ago. You guys have approved spending that, extra funds on that. That's going to be a fabulous park for families to come in and enjoy. The School of History Museum Plaza, that wasn't in the original project, but once we started building it, we said, you know, we got to replace that plaza. It's got to match the rest of downtown, so it looks good. And that's been replaced, and some of y'all probably have seen it. It looks real nice. There's more coming to it. All you've seen is the concrete. And then, you know, one of the things we want to do is make sure that whole Town Square center part was set up for events, so when people come in with their tents and their food trucks and things, they have places to hook up for water, hook up for electric. City Hall, we've enhanced the accessibility features. We've added hearing loops to rooms. We've added kiosks. We've added sound systems, pedestrian safety gear to tell people who have disabilities when they're coming up to the road, when to cross. So we've been able to enhance those. We added a deck trellis on the fourth floor. It's going to be a great place to watch concerts if, when you come. We have done some, in the library, we've added a bunch of reading rooms and some glass in it to make it safe for people to use it, but also separate from the library, so you can read and maybe have small meetings and study. And some, and again, enhanced security. One of the things in the police station we added, which we didn't have when we started, was we decided after we set the GMP that the police station should be a full, fully occupiable building during an emergency event, like a hurricane. So we've added full generator power to that station, plus we have it for the fire station right next door, and they're both joined together, so we can share. So it gives us a much stronger emergency EOC, public safety complex than we had before. So that was a big change we made, which we think was the right thing to do. And Fire Station 1 was one of the bigger changes we made. When we started that, that was going to be a two-bay station for six crew members. It's, you know, looking at the future and looking at the load that's coming into the downtown area, we decided to expand it to a 10-man crew, which is a three-bay station. And so we were able to do that within the current budget, so that was exciting. We were able to find enough savings to expand that building about 2,800 square feet and out of bay. So those are some of the things we've changed. So let's go to the next subject. So any comments on that first? I should, any questions? Next subject is, we have, I mean, as y'all are aware from the last update, you know, the parking garages aren't going to be ready when City Hall's ready. So we've worked with JKM, John Markey, on some temporary parking. We've come up with a plan that the city and JKM has agreed to, that, oh, John's right behind me. Okay, he did come in. Didn't see him come in. That we've agreed to, that we like, we think it works for the city, it works for John and him building his buildings, because he needs areas to build also. And it's somewhat flexible. This may change a little bit as things progress and as things move, but it gives the ability to park City Hall until the South Garage is finished, and then we move to the North Garage and get the North Garage finished. So we're still on track, but due to just some, just some things in the market, you know, projects, like I told you at the beginning, construction is a dirty nasty business, and things don't always go as planned, and, but we had contingencies, and this was a contingency. Again, we think it's a good plan. It'll be in place. It's paved parking. It has sidewalk access, ADA accessible throughout the site. It's really not that much further than where you would park in a parking garage, so it's not that many more steps. One of the things we will do temporarily is we'll keep Ocean Avenue to short-term parking, so people are just running into City Hall and back, they can park on the road and on Ocean Avenue for short term, so we don't get long-term parking there. We'll do some temporary signage on that. And then we've also worked with John on the South, so he can actually build all of those things, stay out of the way, so we figured out a way to move traffic in and out of the construction site while keeping our site safe. So we've reviewed it. We're in agreement that that works. We're working now on some schedules of when to build it. So we're pretty comfortable that that works, and it'll get us through the timeframe of getting the South Garage built. So the last thing update I want to talk about is what's on your agenda tonight, and I know there was probably some confusion on this. I'll take the blame for that. I thought it was clear when I wrote it, but clearly there was some people that it wasn't. But what, one of the things that we talked about last time is looking for a way to accelerate these garages, especially on the North Garage, is to accelerate the construction, because waiting on the market will work. The private developer, John, is committed to build both garages. He's contractually committed to build them. The question is, do we want to build a little sooner to get some other projects going? The hotel can't be built till the garage is built, so do we want the hotel faster? So we've talked about some options on how to do that. One of the options we've come up, and there's a couple on the table, one of them we've come up with would be an assessment on just the parcels that use those parking garages. So there's four parcels that would use that parking garage. It's the hotel parcel, and then the three parcels that JKM owned that are developing, which are a mixed, both, all three mixed-use parcels. Part of an assessment process is you have to go and you have to advertise, saying, "Owners, people who own this property, we may assess you." And that's what this resolution is. This resolution is, we did an advertisement, and we're saying, "Owner," which is John and the city, it's only two owners, it's John and the city, "we may assess you this if we choose to move forward in this direction." It doesn't say we are moving forward, it's just, it's an intent to say assess. So an owner, if they don't want to be assessed, can come in and say something. In this case, John asked us to do this, so I don't think the owner's against it, because he's part of the team to do it. So again, I want to go back, and I'll just go through this real quick. The assessment would only be on those four parcels in Town Square, nothing else, no other taxpayers, and the reason this assessment, the assessment's going to be based on the number of parking spaces each one of those parcels needs in those parking garages to cover the capital cost of those parking garages. The city's capital cost is already covered. We've already covered that with our land sales. That was in the budget, so we've covered our cost. So that's what it is, and so we funded it. So that's as simple as I can say what the assessment is. It's an assessment on the private property owner in Town Square to fund that garage for, for the private property owner. It's not for anybody else. It's not, nobody else pays, nobody else pays into it. And we'll get, and we'll bring back more details when they're ready. Right now, this is just very preliminary. We have to do this step, and you'll see it later in the agenda, but I wanted to cover it in the update. We have to do this step to move on to any other steps, because if we don't do this step, we can't even look at assessments. But it is a methodology and a way to fund the garage and actually speed up the construction of it. So with that, I'll open it for any questions. And John's here, and...
Mr. McCray? Colin, yeah, I'm glad you cleared that up, because I'm just, I got a phone call from Channel 12 News, asked me what was this. They could not reach any of you all. I didn't know hell anything about it either, and I'm just saying, you know, when y'all start doing agendas and stuff, I'm just saying, with stuff like this, you know, y'all need to make sure that we're clear. I'm just saying, I don't like telling people that I don't know what the hell's going on, but I didn't know what was going on.
Yeah, hindsight, it was not clear enough written. I agree with you. That was my fault. I wrote it. It looked clear when I wrote it. It didn't look clear after I got the complaints.
Okay, I'm good.
We do learn. Any other questions?
Seeing none? Oh, Commissioner Romulus?
Right. So I know we were able to make some money by some of the things that CFP did. How are we doing on the naming rights campaign?
So, I don't know the current, I know we've received one that's been in the paper. I do know there's a lot of contacts and meetings going on right now, because I'm invited to some of them. I'm going to be sitting on some of them, and some of y'all may be invited to some of them also. Right now, we're in that preliminary stage where they're setting up the people that want to come in. You know, you go find these people that are going to do naming rights. We do believe we'll get some naming rights. We believe the opportunities are really good opportunities for companies to come in, our families, our endowments, to come in and provide some funding. Again, all of that funding is for some extra stuff that's not currently in the budget, so it'd be great to get, and we can do some extra stuff. If we don't get it, we still have a good project, but that's where we are. We're in that preliminary stage where they're doing all the contacts and getting information out and talking to people. So Lori, I don't know if she's...
I know one large gift, several small gifts. I just don't know what they are precisely, but I can certainly talk to Charlotte Pelton and get something, and I'll send you an email tomorrow. It's very early on in the campaign, so they're, they're building relationships, establishing contacts. You don't walk in, meet someone, and say, "Hi, will you write a check for half a million dollars?"
I'm aware.
So it takes a little bit of time, but...
I would just like an update on whatever progress we've made on that process.
Absolutely. I do think they will be updating on a monthly basis as they start seeing things come in.
And Lori, excuse me, yeah, the one that you didn't want to probably say, I'm just saying, was one that went in for the library. I'm just saying, that was $165,000. I'm just saying, you know, this is stuff that y'all need to be tooting your horn about. I'm just saying, y'all want people to give, let them know that they're giving big chunks of money, $165,000. That's not chump change.
That is not chump change, and it's well, it was well-needed, and it's going to be a great use.
Yeah, and The Post did a nice article for us on that.
And that was related to that campaign?
Yes. That was a direct, a direct gift from the Friends of the Library.
See, and I, and I didn't know that, so I would like a memo or something to just...
Absolutely.
Check with Charlotte on what, maybe every, once a month or something, I can send something to.
We could just add it into this monthly update that we're doing.
We can.
That way we know how that's going along. Thank you.
Any other? All right. All right, thanks.
John?
We got you here.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Oh, I almost got away.
Yeah.
For the record, John Markey, private sector developer. I am here for questions and informational purposes if the Commission has any need.
So what is the expected cost for those parking garages with the, wait, and how much money is the specialist supposed, assessment supposed to raise?
Well, we're looking right now at both garages being a total of, in the area of $34 million.
Okay.
There's some contingency in there, soft costs, you know, anticipating that there may be changes that the city may want, but that's where we are as far as a bond issuance.
Okay. And so, one of the things I mentioned, that, you know, it's very expensive to put parking space in a parking garage compared to on a lot. And so, do you feel that there's going to be savings with the type of construction? Because normally I've heard that it's around $25,000 per parking space.
No, that's, that's not accurate, Mr. Mayor. We are already under contract on the South Building, and we've actually already paid about $600,000 of that contract. That total contract is $12 million and about $300,000. That comes out to about $17,000 of space. It's a big difference. You know, a pre-cast garage that is cast-in-place concrete would be running in that amount, but we're, or, excuse me, a cast-in-place garage, but we're talking about pre-cast garages, which are cheaper to make and faster to erect.
All right. Thank you for that. Yes, Vice Mayor?
Only two questions, and I promise, I'm a good dude, so they won't be, they won't be difficult. First, with this new plan for the bond to float the cost of the garages, what is now the anticipated start date for the South Garage?
We're looking at projecting with some conservative room, April. I think it's possible to get it done faster. If we can come to terms with this new methodology that accelerates the North Garage in a large way, we're going to have a bit of legal work to do, which I think is probably easy to work out, having worked with your city attorney and knowing how they understand these types of things. I feel we could get that done fairly quick, and it's also not a reinvent, inventing of the wheel, so a lot of things are already in the current agreements. We're just accelerating them.
So if it starts in April, what's the estimated completion date for...
We're saying TCO now in December.
Okay. And then, last question. What are the implications for the delay in the garage construction on the starting of the construction for the South Residential? What is the anticipated start date for the South Residential now?
We're lagging behind the construction of the garage by four to five months, depending on how fast erection happens.
What is the anticipated start date for the South Residential now?
We're lagging behind the construction of the garage by four to five months, depending on how fast erection happens. The garage doesn't have to be finished, but the pieces of pre-cast concrete have to be erected so we don't have differential settlement between the buildings.
So second quarter '21, like going into the summertime of '21, you think, or earlier?
I would like to see that be last quarter of this year.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you very much.
All right. Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. John, my question is, you're talking about garages and I'm just saying, nobody's really said anything about security in garages. But we have security there?
The garages all have, within the contract that I just quoted you, within that price, we have closed circuit cameras in the garages.
I just want to make sure that we don't be on TV, you know, saying that we built a garage and we don't have cameras. That's all. I'm just covering it while I'm here.
No, we include those in our contracts with the design builder.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Romulus?
I'm not sure if I heard properly what the answer was to Vice Mayor Katz's question. I wanted to know what is the estimated completion date, like CO date for the garage, the South Garage?
When I say TCO, I'm saying temporary CO. So that is anticipated as December. Full CO would be January, the following January. But we're actually saying TCO because that's when the garage is able to be occupied.
So you're saying December of this year, that's where we're at?
That's correct, Commissioner.
If all goes well and nothing falls through with this bond and everything else that we're discussing.
Well, that's correct. And actually, we're going to get into the resolution and we probably need to spend some more time with commissioners individually, but the bond is not really what we're depending on to fund the construction of the garage. I'm still funding it with a construction loan, but the bonds are a backup that will eventually take out the construction loan, the assessment paid by me. Obviously, I'm assessing myself.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Any further questions regarding the Town Square update? Seeing none? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Moving on to proclaim February 21st, 2020 as International Mother Language Day. City of Boynton Beach proclamation, whereas a mother language is vital to every individual's sense of identity and development, and whereas language is the cornerstone of culture and is the means of communication among people, and whereas after the British Empire left India, the newly formed government of Pakistan declared Urdu to be the sole national language of both West Pakistan and East Pakistan. People of East Pakistan protested since the majority of the population's mother language was Bengala. Whereas to demolish the protests, the government of Pakistan outlawed public meetings and rallies. Students with the support of the general public arranged massive rallies and meetings. Subsequently, millions of Bangladeshis were genocide by 1972 in the name of having the ability to speak their language, self-determination, and hold their culture. They sacrificed their lives for keeping their mother language and every nation's mother language. And whereas in August 1st, 2000... I'm sorry. 1972, George Harrison of the Beatles, the concert for Bangladesh, to raise awareness of the blight afflicting the Bangladeshis and has raised over 12 million for the Bangladeshi refugee relief. Whereas, the Bangladeshis celebrate the International Mother Language Day on the 21st of February every year as one of their days of remembrance. They visit the Shaheed Menar, a monument built in memory of the martyrs and its replicas to express their deep sorrow, respect, and gratefulness to them. And whereas, International Mother Language Day was proclaimed by the General Conference of the United Nations Education, Scientific, and Cultural Organization, UNESCO, in November 1999. And whereas, on the 16th of May, 2007, the United Nations General Assembly in its resolution called upon member states to promote the preservation and protection of all languages used by people of the world. By the same resolution, the General Assembly proclaimed 2008 as the International Year of Languages to promote unity and diversity and international understanding through multilingualism and multiculturalism. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, hereby proclaim February 21st, 2020 as International Mother Language Day.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Iman Kareem. For the record, I am the CEO and the founder of ABPAC. ABPAC stands for American Bangladesh Public Affairs Committee. And the main source for ABPAC is to help our community to get more recognized with the local officials here and how to live better in America. So this is one of the most important days. My dad fought for that war. My uncle did. I had a lot of family that died. So it's a great honor because this is the first time in Florida in history that any local official government has recognized this celebration holiday for us, and we really thank you for that. And we also have a festival coming up on this Sunday, February 23rd. I personally sent all of you guys private emails to invite you to come here to see this festival, see how lively it is. We'll have all different chambers, from the Haitian Chamber to the Puerto Rican Chamber and so forth, different churches celebrating this event. And many people that live here will also be there. We'll be serving food for free to the community and having different contests for the kids for art. So it's a celebration of life, it's a celebration of language, it's a celebration of our culture no matter where we are. And we really thank you for giving us the opportunity to host it here in Boynton Beach, and we look forward to doing it every year here. Thank you.
What's the address?
Sorry. The, I'm sorry, the address is February 23rd, Sarah Sims Park. It's going to be from noon to sunset, and we have a special reef award. We have the Shoid Menar and we give respect. So we have a flower reef award set aside for all the members of the city to come over there and go together and give thanks to all the veterans, whether it's here in America or anywhere else in the world that fought for religion, language, and culture. Thank you.
We will now move on to public audience. Individual speakers will be limited to three-minute presentations. Please state your name and address for the record before you begin. And please form a line up along the wall. Thank you.
Okay, popular place. Harry Woodworth, 6A5 Northeast 15th Place. Usually pretty quick to come up here and complain, but I got some recognition I'd like to pass out. I think everybody knows that INCA over the years has done projects along Federal Highway working with the city or the CRA to make it look nicer. Some of those things are like getting FPNL and AT&amp;T to get rid of those old wooden poles they left us after they put the new concrete ones up, working with the CRA to get that mess that the Mayor of Gas left there for us, out of the nice new boat place over there now. A few other things. Most recently, we've been working with the city manager and the police department to get that ungodly mess of parking in front of the U-Haul off the street and back onto their business so we can use the sidewalk, the U-turn in Federal Highway, and the bike lane, all of which have been blocked for years and years and years. The first email on that goes back over 12 years. The good news is, in the last two months, Lori and I haven't changed emails. She's gotten with the police department. I encourage anyone driving up Federal Highway to let a look at how absolutely gorgeous that U-Haul mess has turned into. They now do their business on their property. The sidewalk is open. You can actually use the sidewalk on the east side of Federal Highway. That's been a rare thing for years. You can ride your bike on the bike lane on the east side of Federal Highway, which hasn't happened in forever. And it's been like that for four days now, so I'm really excited. And I thank Lori and Major Johnson of the Police Department, who goes over there pretty much every day. And I don't know all those motorcycle guys writing tickets, but if you park on the road in front of U-Haul illegally now, you will get a ticket, which I think is just wonderful. And I thank the police department and the city manager for finally fixing that. Thank you.
For the record, my name is Lindora Frazier. Thank you, Mayor, for allowing us to be here today to present about our program. Our program is a part of Jewish Family Services of Palm Beach County. We have over 30...
We have you on the agenda for the administrative, so you're right afterwards.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No worries.
Mark Heffernan, 209 North Seacrest Boulevard. I think I've taken up residency there. Colin gave a great presentation. I thank him for giving me the evening off, but being the good steward of the city's money is just part of our role as the master developer. And today, I'd like to present a check to the city for $5,000, which is a down payment on the dirt that we were encouraged to sell on behalf of the city. So beyond selling land, now we're selling dirt, and I know every dollar counts.
Whatever it takes.
So I'll present that to Colin. And Colin, I know you've got about five people in the audience. I won't name them out, but we'll come after you for this money.
Yeah, everybody wants a copy.
As always, it's a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Suzanne Ross with the Schoolhouse Children's Museum. I have two announcements and one comment. The first announcement is that Friday, excuse me, Friday and Saturday, March 6th and 7th, is Art in Bloom again at the Children's Museum. It is a fun flower show where garden club members interpret colorful artwork from Point Sienna Elementary School children in the form of floral arrangements. Friday evening, from 5:00 until 7:00 PM, is a reception with light bites and refreshments. And Saturday, the art display is from 10:00 AM until 4:00 PM, and both are free. We welcome you and encourage you to join us. Next announcement is the save the date for April 23rd this year, which is a Thursday evening for the Schoolhouse Bash Too Cool for School. Again, will be taking place at Benvenuto from 6:00 to 10:00 PM. It's once again going to be a very fun evening, and this year we are honoring Marcy and James Young of Young Pediatric Dentistry and the Boynton Beach Garden Club. I do have flyers for both of these events up here on the front desk if you'd like to take some on your way home. And then to shift gears, I do have a comment about parking, the parking announcement that was made earlier. I understand that the parking garages are delayed and that surface parking will be put into place. However, my concern is that it's not slated to start until June 1st. Our busiest time of year begins June 1st. We alone will utilize 60 parking spaces in that lot just east of the museum, which is slated to have 109 put in, at least according to what I saw on the screen. So I respectfully request if that parking area can be started before June 1st so we're not shut out. Because I'm very pleased to announce that the museum, having survived last year of construction, our memberships and visitation is actually up 25% in both areas over last year. So we are going gangbusters and I really don't want to lose that momentum. So I would appreciate any assistance you could give us. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just comment on that. It did say June 1st. John has already agreed to move that start date up to May 1st.
Okay.
So I had failed to mention that again, that he had already agreed to that. And we will maintain her park, the parking that we use for the Schoolhouse Museum will actually stay open during, even while we're building the other park, temporary parking.
Perfect. Thank you.
Good to know. Thank you.
Good evening. Minister Bernard Wright, current candidate of District 2 City Commissioner, Real Talk Radio CEO, and Bernard Wright. Minister, I just want to thank Lori, Mayor, and all of you all who signed off on the Robert DeWels Love Fest, and all of you all who are signing off on a better Boynton, because we're really on the move and for the better, we can see it. I want to thank the chief for the presence we do have and not trying to make it more than what it is. It is doing a good, effective job there, Cross Cherry Hill. We don't need more, but what we do have, just more interaction. I just want to thank you all for doing a great job up to this point. Thank you and have a great day.
Ralph Lewis, 1054 Gateway Boulevard, 33426. I'm here on behalf of the Hat Foundation and just want to give you an update on how everything has been going. In 2018, you were able to help us feed 2,500 families when it came down to Thanksgiving. Last year, we were able to help feed over 10,000 families with the donations that you were able to make, so thank you so much for that. This year, what we want to do is start earlier, and I want to do Project Feed a Family, which will be launching on April 4th, 2020. We want to feed 5,000 families before actual Thanksgiving. So I'm here to ask if you guys could please give me the same support you have been giving me throughout the years to be able to be able to feed these families. As you know as well too, there's over 64,000 people in Palm Beach County or children who do not know where their next meal is coming from. And I also have statistics about how we have diabetes also that has struck hard in Florida. And most of it here, since we are full with minorities, do have a lot of diabetes or are prediabetics. So with that being said, we came up with a program to be able to launch free diabetic education classes to be able to help anyone who either has, is prediabetic, type 1 diabetes or type 2 diabetes, to be able to help them, educate them on how they are to be health-wise, what to eat nutritionally, how to exercise to help prevent it, or if they need to manage And about 2.4 million people are in Florida like that. 12% is actually here in Palm Beach County. Is there any way that I can get a meeting with you guys to be able to help move forward with what I'm trying to implement?
Yeah, Vice Mayor.
So what I'll recommend, and I'll certainly speak to the people at Feeding South Florida, which is kind of like a food bank hub in Boynton Beach just off of High Ridge and Gateway. They have tremendous resources, and I have no doubt that if we connected you with them, they would be able to coincide providing food with your timetable. So what I can promise to do is to get your contact information to them or vice versa and try to facilitate that meeting. I know a number of commissioners up here as well, and the mayor also have a positive relationship with Feeding South Florida, so I think that's a tremendous opportunity for a very big institution to help you out, because that's literally what they do is, again, they kind of act as a hub where they distribute food to smaller food banks or operations. So if you provide your contact information on a piece of paper to Colin, I can promise you to get you the contact information and also to speak to the leadership at Feeding South Florida.
Yeah, I will definitely leave that for you. Thank you again, again, last Thanksgiving, for being able to make a donation to make us, help us reach our goal of feeding over 50,000 people.
And, you know, I really appreciate, I remember two years ago when you had all the turkeys and you were just handing out. I saw how long the line is. You know, I kind of spread the wealth around with my community support funds, and so I look forward to donating $200 to your cause and moving forward. So I'll look forward to the email from you so that I can get your information and we can move forward with that.
Definitely. You know it's coming.
All right. Thank you.
Hey, Susan Oyer, 140 Southeast 27th Way, Colin. Sure you take one, Colin. Okay, today I'm passing around papers on Poland having glow-in-the-dark bicycle path. They are charged by the sun, and since we're doing all this great stuff in the City of Boynton Beach, I figured it's worth us taking a look at as this being a possibility, because then you're not paying long-term electricity charge costs, but you are getting lights. This was in the Palm Beach Post. You can see the information on it, so you can go back and look it up. But if these colors were in, if these pictures were in color, you would see that they're able to make the bicycle on the back in the picture is blue, glowing blue, and the little person is glowing blue on the regular pavement. The picture at the top is just all blue, because I'm thinking, you know, Delray has green. Why can't we have something exciting and solar and blue, especially since we have beach in our name? And maybe that would be a nice thing for us to think about as we bring people into Boynton off of Boynton Beach Boulevard and head them towards the beach. Maybe this would be a nice way to light things up and not cost as much because it's glow-in-the-dark pavement versus actual lighting. So I hope this will be a good inspiration for you guys. The second thing I want to say is I was by the cemetery over the weekend, and we still have tons of plants, and we are at approximately three bougainvilleas, two to three hibiscus, and a norfolk pine, which, you know, is this high. I put pictures on my Facebook, because if I tried to send that many pictures out, it wouldn't go through to each of you on email. And again, I'm going to say, if we're now allowed to all of a sudden start planting trees and bushes in the cemetery, then, you know, there's a purple jacaranda in my future. But if we're not allowed to have trees in the cemetery, which I believe we are not, then the question is, when are all these trees and bushes going to be taken out? And I also found two plumbagos as well over in the children's section, so it's just starting to get out of hand. You know, now everyone's planting plants and we need to get a grip on this. And I'd like to say a special note of thank you to Vice Mayor Katz, who was nice enough to reply to me when all of this was going on about the tax thing, that I, no one seemed to understand Colin's stuff. So sorry, Colin, but, you know, I got woken up Saturday morning about this, and thank you for the city manager responding as well. I appreciate, but Commissioner Katz, or sorry, Vice Mayor Katz, really went out of his way to contact me and several other people, and thank you for taking care of this. Have a good one.
Dr. Blas, 113 Tara Lakes Drive, Boynton Beach, Florida, 33436. There's so many wonderful things going on in this city. I would like to comment on them. One, and I'm not brown-nosing, but our mayor, when I heard the list of things he's doing every day, it's simply amazing. It's too bad that you will be timed out. I hope you will run for Congress. Now, the Bengali community, I want you to know, I'm your bundu. Bundu. Bundu means friend. And I want to say some things that maybe not everybody knows. The Bengali people are perhaps the most generous people in the world. I had a neighbor, when he moved, he just gave me all of his furniture. I mean, just like that. And now recently, with the Rohingya, when there was genocide, your country is not rich, but you took millions of people and helped them. So let's give them a hand, okay? And something else, which as most of you people here know, I'm a Polish Jew, Polish-American Jew, and my neighbor was Zamenhof. Listen, he created the international language called Esperanto. His dream was... language called Esperanto. His dream was for the whole world to have a language to understand. And of course, he respected individual languages. One little funny story, and I don't mind telling you something happy. So, Zamenhof's family were my neighbors, and they had two little girls, and they had a dog named Philip. I thought the dog could not walk, because they would carry the dog every place. So, that was just a happy memory. So, thank you again. But now, as to now, I know I'm running out of time. I always run out of time. But, you know, I want to, this Bahamian guy there, Wells, you see, we have a dilemma in District Two. The dilemma is, we have King of all Commissioners McCray, who's done a wonderful job, but he's timed out. Okay? I'm so nice, he will probably bury me one day. Anyway, that's an inside joke. But now, the, but we have the Bahamian guy here, and we have Dwyer, right? I think that we should enlarge the city commission. I mean, such candidates you will not find anywhere in America. And so, when I hopefully become mayor, a bundus try to vote for me, then I will actually enlarge the commission. Because our city, let's repeat it, our city was settled from this side by the Bahamians, and the Michigan people came from the other side, right? So, we need to have somebody from the Bahamas on the commission. I mean, okay, so other than that, other than that, very quickly. So, you know, I work in mathematics of finance. I think it would take me five seconds. I was so happy to hear that these guys took some money, invested it, and made a profit, and reinvested. For your information, the fund we are managing now makes fifty-seven percent in two years. We'll be happy to reinvest for you. God bless you. Bye.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else for our public audience? Please stand up now. Seeing none, public audience is now closed. We're moving on to administrative. We have approved the request of Mayor Grant to distribute two hundred dollars of community support funds to the Albert Jewish Family Service. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Now you can present.
Thank you, Mayor, for having us here today. My name is Lindor Fraser. I'm the Outreach Coordinator for Mentoring for Kids under Jewish Family Services of Palm Beach County. We have over thirty-five programs. We're a full social service agency. One of our programs is Mentoring for Kids, which is the amazing organization I want to share with you today. We have kids in our program ages six to fourteen, living in single-family homes, who are in need of positive role models. We also have kids on our waiting list in the Boynton Beach area schools. We've partnered with about four schools in Boynton Beach. We are here to share with you our need for mentors, and why mentors are so important to being positive role models to our kids. Also, we wanted to say thank you also for the two hundred dollar grant that you gave us. We really appreciate it. It's something that we can use to really push our mission forward with helping our youth. Thank you.
So, Linda, one of the things that we do to help support is that we relay information on social media. So, if you can give us some of your social media posts where you're requesting for those mentors, we'd like to push that, hopefully, the city marketing department can push that out, so that we can get the mentors for the people, or for our children in Boynton Beach.
That would be awesome. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes.
So, your request today is you're looking for mentors?
Yes. We are looking for mentors, positive mentors for our, for our youth, male and female. We do need mentors from all, you know, all walks of life. Our mentors currently now are mostly retired. However, as long as the mentors are ages twenty-five and above, and they pass our background screenings, they could possibly be a mentor in our program.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, sorry.
All right. Next, we have approved the request of Mayor Grant to distribute two hundred dollars of his community support funds to the Peggy Adams Annual Rescue League.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is an honor to be here tonight. I'm Rich Anderson. I'm the Executive Director and CEO of Peggy Adams Animal Rescue League. We're the oldest and largest adoption and animal welfare organization in Palm Beach County, founded in nineteen twenty-five. It's not very often I get to thank a city for supporting our work. We are grateful for the community of Boynton Beach as a whole. It's an incredibly generous community. They, the residents of Boynton Beach clearly love their animals and care about animal welfare in our community. I just wanted to share some of the impact of Peggy Adams on this community alone. In the last year, two hundred and two animals were adopted at Peggy Adams by Boynton Beach residents. Twenty animals who had been lost in the last twelve months have been reunited with their owners here in Boynton Beach. In the last year, a total of more than twenty-eight hundred animals living in Boynton Beach have benefited from our services, including eight hundred and thirty-three pets that received free spay-neuter surgeries, vaccines, and microchips. That saved residents of Boynton Beach easily at least a hundred thousand dollars by taking advantage of those services of Peggy Adams. And we could not do what we do every day without the support of this town's residents. Currently, two hundred and sixty-five residents of Boynton Beach volunteer at Peggy Adams Animal Rescue League. And last year alone, nearly eighteen hundred residents of Boynton generously donated in support of our programs, totaling more than two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in support of our efforts here in Palm Beach County. So, I'm here to really just say thank you to the commission and the city of Boynton Beach for all the support that you give Peggy Adams and the animals of our community. And then I will make one note that this Saturday, we have our annual Walk for the Animals in downtown West Palm Beach. We expect more than a thousand people and their pets to be out for that event. It's one of our biggest fundraisers of the year, and I encourage everyone to come out for a great day on Saturday.
What time is that?
Registration starts at nine AM. The walk starts at ten, and it'll be wrapped up by noon.
Okay. And I don't know, do we advertise our oceanfront park as well? The February this Saturday?
On social media, we do.
Okay. And so, we're also having our own events. So, one of the things that we do in Boynton Beach is that when it is not sea turtle nesting season, we have a day at the beach for the dogs. And so, we're
Wonderful.
We're actually having an event as well at that same time with the city. But I'd like to hopefully partner with you and your organization for our next year event, so that we can get more people there. And because the, it's not just the dogs that are interacting, it's the people that are interacting. And I feel that, you know, being a dog owner, I get that fortunate of saying hello to my neighbors that I may not normally say hello to. And I want to thank you, because I got a cat with its ear clipped off, that I took her to animal control, and two weeks later, she was fixed and back to my backyard. And so, I was able to take her in. So, I really appreciate all the services that you do for Palm Beach County.
Thank you. I really appreciate it.
Next, we have the request of Commissioner McCray to distribute one thousand of his community support funds to Point Sienna Elementary School for the school's safety patrol program.
I'm moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously.
Principal Bice here.
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Kathleen DePuma. I'm the proud principal of Point Sienna STEM Elementary School. We are very appreciative of your support of our school. We work very closely with the community. I know the Boynton Beach Police Department comes in and mentors our students. Your garden club has transformed a beautiful courtyard garden, and works with our students in our after-school garden club. Mayor Grant visits our school, and he actually is going to be emcee of our talent show, where we showcase many of the talents here Friday evening. So, come on out and join us there. We're also working with the community greening, and on Saturday, community greening is, we're going to be planting fifty trees on our school campus to help with the community greening efforts. And we're working very hard to prepare our students to be responsible and productive citizens of this great vibrant community, and also preparing to be a future productive workforce for the city of Boynton Beach. So, again, thank you so much. We appreciate your partnership, and we invite as many of you to come out and join us and partner with us. And again, Commissioner McCray, who was a student of Point Sienna back in the day, he joined us for our Student in the Month breakfast, and we're very appreciative for the support here of the commission and mayor, Vice Mayor. Thank you so very much.
Stay up there.
Yep.
Hello, come back. Principal. Principal, come back.
We've still got some questions for you. It's not that easy.
You got called to the principal's office.
Yes.
Commissioner McCray, would you like to begin?
Yes, thank you. I was a pen, and it wasn't a hundred years ago. It was about sixty I was out there. But anyway, I really want to say that any time I hear anything about the school's safety patrols, it kind of touched my heart, because I'm just saying, when I was a safety patrol at Point Sienna, an anonymous donor came forth and paid my entire expenses to go to Washington, DC. And that was something that my parents was not able to afford. And it was a trip that I would, I would never forget. And I said, every year, you know, when I have to scrounge my own money, I always try to step up and, you know, help send some child anonymously, you know, to Washington, for them to receive the same benefit that I did representing Point Sienna. And I was an excellent safety patrol. I don't know why I did not go into law enforcement. Thank you.
Well, thank you. This will certainly support many of our students that are so deserving, and will have an opportunity that otherwise they may not. So, again, we're so appreciative of this generous support of our school and our students. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Romulus?
Right. That was my question. I was asking, I was going to ask, what was the, what were the funds being used for exactly? How many students would this allow to go, this thousand dollars?
It costs approximately a thousand dollars to send, send a student to DC. We do fundraisers to help reduce that cost, but that's currently what the cost is to go. And we've tried it both ways. Sometimes we take the train with the school district, does a trip to help keep the cost down, but that trip is now up to approximately a thousand dollars. We're flying this year, because we opted to go in May. And by flying, the students have more time in DC. And because we do units of study around some of the areas and some of the buildings and experiences that they're going to have in DC, we felt that this gave them more time to explore them and to really live what they've been learning throughout the school year. But unfortunately, it's about a thousand dollars. That includes hotel, transportation, food, and things of that sort.
Thank you for clarifying.
But what we would do with that thousand dollars is certainly spread it out, so more students have the opportunity, and they wouldn't have to raise so much of the funds for that. Thank you.
And also for the talent show, I don't know if the funds are going to be used for that, but the silent auction is going to be at the Point Sienna STEM PTA Facebook.
That's correct.
And so, if you could get that information to us, so that we could also share it with the community, so that you get the most money from the silent auction items.
That would be wonderful. We'd appreciate that support as well. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
This is more a question for Commissioner McCray, and it's a long shot. Do you by chance have a picture of when you went on this trip in your safety patrol attire?
I do not have the picture, but guess what? It's, no, no, it's in the archives of the school district. I'm just saying, I was on the front row. My pants was too short, but I have a belt around my waist, and I looked kind of funny. The cap was kind of small. But guess what? I represented Point Sienna well, and guess what? I had no idea that chickens were so large until I got to Washington, DC. Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy it.
What was so large?
Chicken.
All right.
Next, item for administrative is authorized travel for Commissioner Romulus to attend the Institute for Elected Municipal Officials, the Leadership Challenge Training in Altamont Springs, Florida, on March sixth to the seventh.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously.
There, I have it. I comment. Just like I said to Commissioner Romulus, you know, I want to just tell you, thank you for continuing to further your endeavors as being an elected official. This is what makes a good elected official, continuing your education, and finding out what others are doing, and bringing ideas back to Boynton. Thank you.
And so, Commissioner Romulus, my question is, is that will you be providing us a presentation of what you learned over there for your leadership challenge?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Sure.
Next, we move to appoint eligible members of the community to serve in vacant positions on the city advisory board. We have vacancies on the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals, the Education Youth Advisory Board, the Historic Resources Preservation Board, the Library Board, and we have one applicant for the Senior Advisory Board, Commissioner Penzerga, or Commissioner Romulus, I'm sorry.
I'd like to appoint Thomas Devlin.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull an item from consent agenda? Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Consent bids, consent bids and purchases over a hundred thousand. Motion to approve. Do I have a, any discussion? I just would like to thank our Public Works Department for buying two electric vehicles. I'm very happy to see that we're moving forward with a more of an electric fleet. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. My information about electric vehicles, I'm just saying, the one that stays parked dutifully at City Hall, that moves seldomly, I'm just saying, it was gone, you know, today. How often do you all use that? You said that, you know, you use it like when the electrical contractors go out and stuff, but I'm just saying, you know, I didn't think we bought a vehicle, you know, to sit up and take up space. I'm just saying, you know, I like to see it up and down the road. I'm, it has a lower, I, you know, said, electric vehicle.
Good evening, Andrew Mack, Director of Public Works and Engineering. Thank you for allowing us to purchase two more electric vehicles. Rebecca Harvey, I don't think she's here tonight, but she was instrumental in trying to get us to do that and work with Community Standards, who are actually going to be the recipients of those two vehicles. To answer your question, the electrical inspector that's assigned to that car is doing more plan review now because of the outsourced cap, or the, the, the plan reviewers inspections that we use in the building department. So, he's in the office more. We're in the process of possibly transferring that additional electric vehicle to Community Standards, so that it will be used more.
I appreciate that.
We're going to retrofit, retrofit the color, not the color, but the graphics, so that it'll fit in with what Community Standards has.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And so, do we know how many miles our Community Standards normally drives on a daily basis, as Adam Temple here?
I would hope a lot.
I don't have that information right now. I don't have it. I can get that, though.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
Can I, can I just add, because I'm so excited about the Nissan Leafs, sorry, Rebecca Harvey, Sustainability Coordinator. With the conversation of electric vehicles, what also happened today was Andrew's staff, Gail Moots, installed an EV charger at Sarah Sims Park, so I'm really excited. These are the ones that we repurposed from Town Square, and we have a couple more going into parks.
All right. Thank you so much. All right. Moving on to public hearing. Yes?
Commissioner Temple, you're outside.
Mr. Temple?
Adam.
Is Adam Temple our sustainability, no, I'm sorry, Community Standards Director?
And University of Miami graduate.
Yes.
Okay.
You need to be sitting down.
The question was, I'm just saying, we wanted to know how, you know, often, how much, you know, gas you all use per year. I'm just saying, you can get this information to us, and give us the mileage, then tell us what the cost savings using these three vehicles that you all will be receiving. I'm just saying. Yeah, we asked a question, and we want an answer. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right. So, moving forward with public hearing, we have a proposed ordinance number twenty dash zero zero two, that's been asked to be continued tabled to the eighteenth. Do we need to retable this item, Jim?
Yes, sir.
All right. And I also asked the board to table item B, approval of the master plan modification, and item C, proposed ordinance number twenty dash zero zero four, to be tabled to, I'm just sorry, not C, just A and B, to be tabled to March eighteenth, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Jim?
Ordinance twenty zero zero four, in accordance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending the Land Development Regulations, Chapter One, General Administration, Article Two, Definitions, and Article Three, Relation to Comprehensive Plan, Article, excuse me, Chapter Three, Zoning, Article One, Overview, Article Three, Zoning Districts and Overlays, Article Four, Use Regulations, and Article Five, Supplemental Regulations, to establish IPUD as a zoning district corresponding to the high-density residential future land use classification, and to eliminate R four, multi-family district from the list of residential zoning districts, providing for conflict severability codification, and an effect- zoning districts, providing for conflict severability codification and an effective date.
Yes. Any other presentation for us?
Yep. Amanda Basili, Principal Planner with the city, just a couple of slides to review what this amendment would do. Effectively, it does two things. We would be eliminating the R4 zoning district, which is a conventional zoning district, and we'd be expanding the applicability of our IPUD zoning district, which is a planned residential district.
Excuse me, would everyone please silence your phones or step outside?
Can't turn Siri off.
All right.
He's listening.
Yep.
Okay, so this is just a comparison between R4 and IPUD. So R4 is a conventional zoning district, so it's comparable to any of our single-family districts. It is not of a planned nature or doesn't have a master planned with it, which IPUD does. What that does, it gives us more flexibility and the ability to do site-specific design, which R4 does not. Currently, we have R4, which is only allowed within our high-density residential category. And IPUD is currently with our special high category. The expansion would essentially be to have it also be with our medium-density residential. So that's the actual expansion is where the IPUD could be used. Something to note is that the R4 zoning district, although it is within the code and we would be eliminating it, there is actually no land with that zoning district on it. Right now, the IPUD is available east of 95, and that would remain unchanged. If you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
My question is regarding the difference between land use and zoning.
Sure.
So when we are removing R4, we're removing the zoning or the land use classification?
R4 is a zoning district. And so if you go back to that slide, R4 is a zoning district, and currently the land use that it goes with is the high-density residential.
And we still have high-density residential?
We still have high-density residential. The expansion part is that the IPUD will now work with high-density residential and our special high-density residential.
Okay. And so all this is doing, and so what was the difference between R4 and R3?
The essential difference is that R4 is a conventional zoning district, meaning it has parameters set within the code, whereas a planned district, it gives us more opportunity to design sites specifically over the conventional zoning district. So that would be like a SMU planned development, our mixed-use developments that we're used to seeing, versus a C3, which is a very structured conventional zoning district.
I understand that was for the IPUD. My question is, what's the difference between the R4 zoning and the high-density residential land use compared to an R3?
Those are two different things. So R3 is zoning, special high-density is land use.
So R4 was zoning, correct?
R4 is zoning, and it currently goes with high-density residential land use.
And R3 goes to?
R3 goes to medium-density residential.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
That was the difference.
I missed the R3 portion of the question.
All right. May I have a motion to approve?
Some o.
Any further discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none? Oh, we got one.
Erwin Smith, 223 Northeast 125. There's a question. I'm not familiar with all that lingo. What does this actually mean for the community? Like, what does this do? Obviously, it's a topic. I just want to understand it a little bit better.
So based upon what Amanda is saying is that we are removing a zoning category that doesn't need to be in our land development regulations anymore, and that we are expanding the use for IPUD, which stands for infill planning. Colin, what's the rest?
Unit development. Yeah, so infill planned unit development is what that stands for, but what it actually does to the community is virtually nothing because there is no R4 property on the ground. This is only within our, like, textbook of code. The only difference it would make is if you have property to redevelop, the options that are available to you might have been just R4, and now instead of R4, you would be able to do IPUD, which would help you develop a little bit more flexible.
When you say the purpose of it is nothing, why is it?
Not the purpose of it. Not the purpose of it. Is to allow more flexibility. We have a zoning district that doesn't have any land attached to it. So it's not needed within our code anymore. And instead of using that, we're expanding one that is already used and being used effectively. I can give you my card if you have specific questions.
All right. Thank you. Yep. Yes, please.
Harry Woodworth, Inca. Since it's only east of I-95, what's left, what IPUD has left east of I-95? I mean, I thought we pretty much used it all up. So what areas does this actually that would be IPUD?
Harry, you got to speak into the microphone to us.
What areas are still IPUD east of I-95?
Lift it up. Your microphone, it'll lift.
Okay.
Yeah, raise your microphone, it'll lift. There you go.
Is that better? Okay. Yeah, I don't come to these anymore. Yeah, I'm just wondering what's specific. Okay, it's east of I-95, so north of Boynton Beach Boulevard, that would be the 12 Inca neighborhoods. South of I-95, I can't even think of any property east of I-95 that's still, well, maybe one, that's still an IPUD. That's what I'm trying to clarify.
So Amanda, do you think you can get us the maps for the second reading?
Well, it's actually a very easy question. There is no minimum land for this zoning district anymore, so it really is infill. And that's why we prefer the planned districts because each parcel's a little bit different. I will say that the high-density residential, although it's not on the ground, is recommended in our CRA redevelopment plan for areas of the heart of Boynton. For areas of the heart of Boynton. I think the proposal right now is on the southeast area, the recommendation for high-density residential.
All right. Thank you. Is there any questions from the board? Seeing none. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Commissioner Penzerga?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Katz?
Yes.
Vote is 5-0.
All right. Proposed Resolution Number 20-018, authorize city manager to move forward with the intent to propose a special assessment for the provisions of parking garage facilities within the city. Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. And Colin?
And it is a public hearing.
It is a public hearing, so would anyone else from the public audience like to speak regarding the special assessment?
I have a question.
All right.
What does that special assessment go be, the fee?
The dollar amount.
That, that, what?
So the dollar amount is not established. This is the first step to start establishing what that dollar amount would be. We do, this is all dictated by state statutes, the process you go through. The first one is to tell property owners there's an intent to assess. In this case, the property owner is JKM and the city. That's the two properties, that's the only properties involved in this. So this step is to say, we have an intent to assess. The next step is to develop the assessment methodology, how much it's going to be, you know, the timeframe, and all of those other details, and those will be coming back to you. This is just the first step so we can actually do those steps, if we choose to, and if it's desired.
Okay.
Vice Mayor?
And again, just to recap what you stated earlier, the assessment will be based on parking spaces utilized by each of the property owners, which would only include hotel owner, JKM, and the city, which we've already budgeted for our parking spaces.
Yes, that is correct. It will be directly related to the number of parking spaces needed for the parcel that's being assessed.
Let me add one thing, please. We do this now because we have a deadline of March the 10th to get this information to the property appraiser to get on the tax roll.
And that would be for?
If we miss that deadline, we have to wait a year.
And so that would be for the 2021 year, correct?
That's right.
All right. Thank you.
And the methodology, once it's derived, is subject to commission approval. So there's several more steps that we'll be bringing back to you.
All right. But so the first step of letting the property appraiser know is what we're doing tonight?
Yeah, and several weeks ago, probably a good month or two, I forget how long now, we had to advertise a notice in the newspaper, which was done, and then this is step two of several more.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously. City managers report. Eleanor Crissell, Public Communications and Marketing.
We have a person standing.
Yeah, there was no chance for public questions. We went straight to a vote.
Well, I'm sorry.
I did announce that.
Yeah, I did. Nobody came up, and then we had the commission.
I was standing up and walking over while you were talking. You just didn't see me.
Okay. So yes, we will allow for any amendment if needed. Please, go ahead.
Thank you. Okay. Susan Oyer, 140 Southeast 27th Way. So I'm just wanting to get verification, what is going to be the actual cost to the city on this? Is this going to be passed on to the residents in any way, shape, or form? And how many spaces is the city getting out of this?
Vice Mayor, you would like to respond to the questions?
As best I can, and Colin can fill in the gaps because I had some lengthy conversations. So the city already paid JKM $10 million for the parking spaces that we would have had access to in the garages. As a result of now this project being backed by a bond, the city's getting, he has to give that $10 million back. So we're spending $10 million on the parking for the city, just like we had already anticipated doing. The remainder of the cost, which will be covered by the special assessment over time, would fall to the other property owners in the project. So the hotel and JKM, because they are the only other property owners at this time. So nobody will bear any cost, and to the best of how it's been explained to me right now is that there are no anticipated increases in the cost to the city because we already paid for the amount of parking spaces that we anticipated getting. As to the number of parking spaces, someone else could answer that.
Well, I think what, 465, Colin, and the two is my memory serving me. 364 in the south garage and 101 in the north. Am I remembering that right?
Yeah, it's a, right. That is correct.
So, but there will be an expense to the city from the standpoint of the operating costs, which we're estimating right now at, I think, a dollar per space per year. So, and that will be factored into the assessment as well. So we will experience, I think, you know, glancing at preliminary numbers, 30,000 or 40,000 in year one for our, you know, the operating side of it. So I can't, it wouldn't be fair to say we won't pay anything.
Right. So the current agreement, JKM would build the garages, and we would still pay our proportioned share of the operating expenses. So even if we do it this way, we'd still pay our proportional share, which we have to pay. I mean, there are city parking spaces, 465 spaces. JKM and the hotel bear the total, the rest of the total cost of the garage's capital and operating, because Commissioner Katz is correct, we've already paid for our capital portion of the garage. We've already budgeted for that. The money is there. So that doesn't come, you know, I can't say the taxpayers didn't pay it because it does come out of that, but that's already paid for. That's part of the project.
Okay, thank you very much. And then I guess my last question will be, is there going to be some type of paid parking for the average resident to go park in the garage like they try and do at Casa Costa, which we were told was supposed to be free?
That's subject, you know, that is something I think the city's going to be looking at in the future. Doesn't necessarily mean right away, but it's going to be a policy decision of the commission to potentially set parking fees for the use of the facility.
Okay.
Policy decision. Not a requirement. I don't believe any of the numbers we've been looking at to date factors in any revenue of paid spaces by the city. So we're being very conservative in estimating what the costs are going to be to operate and not, we're not factoring in any revenues at this point because that's subject to the commission's decision if you want to do that in the future, which would ultimately help the parking fund. But too soon to discuss that.
Correct.
Thank you so much.
And I do apologize. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for the proposed Resolution Number 20-018? Okay. Does this commission need to amend their ruling at all? Reconsider, I'm sorry. Seeing no? Moving forward with Eleanor Crissell, Public Communications and Marketing Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. It's my pleasure to offer you some suggestions regarding our centennial celebration, which is this year. I'm going to do a slight PowerPoint project on some suggestions that the marketing committee has created. By no means are these set in stone. We're open to suggestions. In fact, we've, for the public, we've asked each commissioner to appoint two members, residents of their district, to assist the city in planning the celebration, supporting its events and activities. And then within that steering committee, there'd be 10 committees that would assist the city in detail, such as a history and education committee. And on top of that, there would be a city department committee because we know that each department has rich history and ways in which to celebrate our centennial as well. We have married this presentation after our calendar, which, yes, it's here finally. It's a little late, but we have it, which is, I want to talk about that a little bit because the theme throughout the entire year will be based on the theme of this calendar, which is postcards. So what we did was we asked each, we asked our residents to submit postcards that they had from 1920 through the current year. So every month has a different year for a postcard, a little bit about that history in our city and the postmark on it, as well as the language that they wrote to the person that receiving it. So as I go through some of the ideas, you'll see where we're including postcards throughout the continuum of the centennial. This was the cover of the calendar and just shows the postmark. Okay, John?
Right there. Here.
Oh, I thought John was helping me out. There you go. I'm sorry, John. Thank you. Oh, John did help me out. I love that. The first page in the calendar is January and shows a postcard and also the person who wrote it and where that postcard went. In January, we're, we've missed January, so as I just said, we, here we are, talking about the postcards and also what we will be doing, what we did, which was the calendar We have winners of that, and that is resident Sheila Rasu Tyler is going to receive $300 for the calendars that she submitted, $100 per piece. On top of that, our historic society, Janet, helped us in our city library, helped us very much in obtaining the other nine postcards. Next slide. In February, try it, here we go, John. I'm not seeing it because I have, there we go. In February, we're going to have a centennial logo contest, an appointment of the steering committee members, which we're asking the commission to appoint, the formation of the centennial committees, and create a tentative centennial plan. Also in that month, we found out that the pool opened in 1956, February 9th, 1956, so we'd like to suggest a pool fee admission, free admission event that month. In March, we'd like to create the centennial logo. And this, again, we'll be taking out to the public for design so that we have somebody And this, again, will be taken out to the public for design, so that we have somebody in the community, a local artist, helping us create that. We have talked to the United States Postal Service, and we will be having our own stamp designed based on the logo that we can utilize on these postcards and letters that you may send, or bills, throughout the year. We also will have a special endisha on our, a stamp for anything that we're sending out of the post office. The post office has been extremely supportive of celebrating this with us. They will, as you'll see sooner as we go on, be involved in several of our events. In addition, we learned that Ocean Park and the beach. Thank you. Love you. In March 12, it was, history for the oceanfront park is that was the day that we bought that small parcel of land at the time, and we hope to have free access to the oceanfront park and beach that day only. We have the Blarney Bash coming up with the CRA, and we hope to participate that, perhaps doing the gold coins with souvenir coins that we can distribute it. And as people collect those throughout the year, they can buy souvenirs or discount on souvenirs that we may offer at the events. The Cultural Arts Center is opening, and we will have the much anticipated Reflections artwork that Debbie's working hard to install on March 27. Then we will, of course, work on our website, our videos we're going to be doing for residents, businesses, and visitors. In April, thank you, Colin, we'll have the new fire station to celebrate on April 15. On April 22, at Sarah Sims is the Earth Day event, and we're hoping to have seed packets made that we distribute 100 seed packets and 100 trees that say, "Come Grow With Us." The extravaganza's on April 11, and we hope to hide the same souvenir coins within some of that Easter egg, eggs that will be distributed and children can obtain. In May, it's preservation month, and we're hoping that we can create a tour, tours of our city to see the history and learn about what Boynton Beach has accomplished in the last 100 years and what we are looking forward to in the next 100 years. The Time Capsule Campaign, we are hoping to go, we will be going to schools, and we will be asking our students to write letters to students 100 years from now. Those letters will be put into a time capsule in City Hall, which we can talk about in June. The Mother's Day Tea at the Women's Club to show the new Women's Club as one of our oldest buildings in the city. In June, the new police station will open, June 4. That will be a grand opening. And CRA Lion Fish Derby will take place on June 6, which is one of our amenities, fishing in Boynton Beach. Free Play Day on June 7. The Links We Learned was open on June 7 in 1985, so we hope to have a free play day there as well, free of charge. In July, this is going to be the one big campaign, one big event of the year. So, our 4th of July is going to be two parks, Boat Club Park as well as Intercoastal Park. And we will have the largest fireworks display that we've had in the history of Boynton Beach. We're having other special celebrations, and one of them will be the 100-year-old resident and veterans will have special seating areas. We will get them to the event, and they'll be able to have a special seating area to watch the fireworks and activities. We'll be adding additional bus service from the west at the Boynton Beach Mall, so we can have residents that are west Boynton attend our event as well. We will have the post office on site at that event, so that you, children, and adults can write letters to their families about Boynton Beach, and it can be postmarked right there, and we will send them out. Of course, we'll have centennial tattoos throughout the year that talk about our 100 year. In July, we also have, this is a big month for us, the new City Hall grand opening on July 21. We anticipate on that day to have the first commission meeting in City Hall and a reenactment, our signing of the incorporation. We will also have the post office there, so you can write postcards and send them to your friends around the country. And we will be gathering in the lobby with music from the roaring twenties, and we will, at that time, seal and place the capsule under the stairs of the first floor of City Hall. We will have a display of old postcards that were submitted and old photographs, and we will have a coffee table book we're working on now that will be available to purchase, as well as publications. We have 12 publications that have been written about the city of Boynton Beach will also be available for sale. In August, we hope to have a community block party in Barbecue Cook-Off at Sarah Sims Park. That date is to be announced. In September, the Cultural Arts Center public grand opening date to be announced. In October, we hope to have a dinner and music at a local church, so we can celebrate our cultural diversity. And the Pirate Fest will be October 31 and November 1, and we hope to hide souvenir coins there as well and have other souvenirs that individuals can purchase with their coins. In November, and I'm glad that we learned about the necessity of distributing turkeys during Thanksgiving, where we had planned on, and hopefully, we will work with our local agencies on collecting 100 turkeys, writing messages of hope from the city of Boynton Beach, and delivering those turkeys to those in need. In December is our second largest event that we'll have. It will be our tree lighting event, and we're discussing that with CRA, exactly what that will be and how these two events will coordinate. We hope to have ornaments that the public can submit and utilize on a tree that incorporate our Boynton Beach history, or if not, perhaps have that tree more of a rendition of Boynton Beach. The 50th Annual Holiday Parade is on December 5, and our goal is to have 100 entries, and our grand marshal to be 100 years old. And we will end the year and the centennial with a centennial gala at the Boynton Beach Cultural Center upstairs in the new gymnasium. And that's just the end, asking all those that would like to volunteer and be a part of it to come have a seat at our table and help us not only look at these, but more in unique ideas for the city of Boynton Beach. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
I have one.
Commissioner McCray.
Thank you. Eleanor, my take is that, I'm just saying, when we get volunteers to come out and volunteer to give information about the history of Boynton.
Yes.
I want to make sure that someone is there to make sure that, as nobody's trying to make sure that their group is only somebody ever did something in Boynton, that somebody need to be there to oversee, to make sure that everybody get credibility.
Yes, I agree.
Because everybody, you know, had a part to play in just.
Agree.
Boynton. I'm just saying, many families. I'm just saying, not no one family, multitudes of families played an important part here in this city, especially in the Afro-American community, and I want them to be recognized, not just one family. I'm just saying, one family did not stop Boynton. They might have been a part of it, but that was other people that was here. I'm just want to make sure that people get recognition. And your October calendar, where you said the area view of Boynton, you showed that. I wish you would have had something like, show us like tonight, let's show us the area view of Boynton now, to show them just how fast Boynton has grown from that point to this point. I'm just saying, they will be amazed. I'm just saying, some of that I remember. I remember Tropical Acres Restaurant and stuff.
Yes.
That's all I'm going to say. I don't want to think that I'm ancient, but I do remember.
I ate there, too. We're in the same, same generation.
Excellent job on your calendar.
Commissioner Romulus.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to say, Eleanor, I mean, you impress every year with these calendars. They're phenomenal, and this one really definitely, I could still see how it's still a work in progress. You still were able to put it together, and it's just commendable. So, I hope we win, we win several awards, as we did last year again, for the work that you're doing, and we put that, put this out there to everybody to really just showcase what we're doing here in Boynton, keep up the great work.
Definitely a team and community effort. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, just wanted to thank you and anyone who contributed. You know, it's one of those annual projects that takes a lot of planning and thought, and seems like a simple thing. It's a calendar, but for it to come together, takes a million little ideas that all work around a theme, so it's impressive every year, and I certainly want to thank you for all your effort.
Thank you.
And, yeah, Eleanor, I know you've been working very hard on this, and so I really appreciate all the hard work that you've done.
Okay, I don't take compliments very well.
And, you know, I would ask the commission to give her a round of applause.
Oh, good.
Because we really appreciate all that you do. You know, it's kind of like, it's easy for me to say, yeah, we can have our marketing department repost your stuff on social media, but.
You did that to me like 20 times tonight.
Yeah.
Up to 11.
Well, it doesn't cost you anything, right?
Time, yeah, time. Good, thanks. That's my boss for you, right there.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to receiving your two appointments, so we can get started.
You have homework. You must submit two names each?
Yes. And the mayor has two at large.
Okay.
By Friday.
Oh, good.
By this Friday.
Did I miss that?
She asked you last week.
If you need me to resend.
Yes, Commissioner Pinzerga.
I'll be happy to.
I just have one question, Eleanor. I know that Harvey Oyer does this wonderful presentation about the history of Boynton Beach. Is he part of our events, one way or another?
I absolutely have him down for the tours, and hopefully, the Boynton Beach City Library will be doing some lectures, so I do have a list of speakers that we're suggesting. I really do want the departments to be involved in what they're doing, so I didn't list specifically every department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving forward to new business, discussion regarding the creation of a community safety task force as it relates to our Vision Zero initiative and pedestrian safety on our streets. I was looking at the minutes, and this was, you know, the paragraph that I had, it also mentioned our community policing unit. The reason for the Community Safety Task Force/Advisory Board, hopefully with this commission's blessing, is so that we get more involvement from our residents, rather than them coming here and yelling that the cars are going too fast. I was in Lake Worth yesterday, and I see how they have the traffic calming measures, the speed bumps, and what is it, trees on the side of the road with flashing lights, and I feel that it's something that, we've had these complaints for decades now, and it's, we've had too many deaths on the road and in the community for us to not do anything moving forward. And we, as the commission, do not see every single road, and I feel like we need to get the community more involved with the safety of the city. Vice Mayor.
I'll thank you for bringing this forward. I fully support the idea of creating a pedestrian safety task force. So, what I would ask is that to ensure that the task force is focused on the specific objective, that whatever we call it, or whatever the scope of the task force is, be confined to pedestrian safety and roadway safety. So, I would just recommend that maybe it be called either the Pedestrian Safety Task Force, or the Vision Zero Pedestrian Safety Task Force, just so it's crystal clear what their objective is.
I would agree with that.
All right, and Commissioner.
My question.
See, I, that's not what I was asking for, because it's much more than pedestrians, it's much more than bicycles. We're dealing with people that are in ATVs, in dirt bikes. We're dealing with people who have mobility issues in their scooters. And dealing with the crime that's been in our city, not just in District 2, but throughout the city, we need to get more involvement of our community in regular meetings, so that people don't just come here to our commission and saying, what have you not done to prevent someone's life from being taken away? And so, well, I agree that you want to just deal with the roadway safety and that. I'm very happy that's, that's a first step, but it doesn't solve the issue of people losing their lives by shopping in our streets, shopping in our stores and walking our streets. Yes, Vice Mayor?
So, then, then just for clarification, then, this is less of a pedestrian safety task force and more of a safe, like, citywide safety task force?
Correct.
Because the word pedestrian, to me, typically.
The fact is, the fact is, is that more people have died in the city on the roads than have been from homicide. However, we need to look at both of those aspects, and dealing with the police department, so that we can work with the county and the state in dealing with the roads, and how do we prevent future drive-bys that are going on in our city? Yes, Vice Mayor?
So, so, as I said, I fully support a pedestrian safety task force that identifies roadway concerns, neighborhoods. Like you said, one of the biggest complaints we get are people about their streets are not, in their opinion, safe because people speed, and there's no speed bumps, or they want stripes or traffic signs and all that. I don't believe that a pedestrian safety task force should be so broad in its scope that if somebody commits a shooting, that that, to me, that's not a pedestrian safety issue, that's a shooting issue. It might happen on a street, but to me, that, it's confusing to me. I would support the finite issue of roadway safety and pedestrian safety, but not a broader scope of residents. It feels too broad to me personally.
All right. Commissioner Romulus?
Yes, I would echo that sentiment, and I definitely understand where you're going with that, Mayor, and perhaps it's more so of, you know, one step at a time, where we create the task force, we tackle a particular item, which in this case would be setting up, you know, whatever program that would allow for us to implement a more pedestrian-friendly, safe streets program, and then, once we wrap that up, we can move to the next initiative. Because again, when you have a group of people and you're giving them 50 assignments to do, it gets lost, it can get murky. And so, if we give them one very specific, goal-oriented task and expect an outcome from that, we can then take that and implement it into some type of policy and say, we accomplished something, and then now, let's move on to item two on the list. I think that's probably where I would see this going, and the better way to utilize the members of the public, who would be giving up their, you know, free time to sit on this task force.
Okay. Commissioner Pinzerga, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I did. So, I think this is a great idea, and I echo the sentiments of Commissioner Romulus. I do want to ask you about how this might play out in the future. So, we have citizens coming to a meeting. Do we have a staff liaison, and how would that work out exactly?
So, the, it's not necessarily just for pedestrians because of all the T-bone accidents, as Commissioner McCray experienced in his own neighborhood, of people running through stop signs. It's kind of dealing with the city's roads and dealing, first off, what can we do to help make sure that our city roads are safer? And one of the key aspects is, I think, the roadway patrol to know where the accidents are happening. And so, we would need somebody from the community policing unit to inform us about the different accidents, where we need to focus on first, and then, dealing with the planning and zoning department, engineering, and public works, so that we figure out what we can do to make the streets safer. You know, it's, you know, the fact that we say five seconds, 10 seconds, I was on Renaissance Commons Boulevard today. It's a 30 mile-per-hour road, but there are speed bumps that you really can't go 15 miles per hour over, you need to go 10. And so, that's something that we need to do for more of our roads, that are these collector roads and that are thoroughfare through different neighborhoods. And so, that's my goal, is, is that we, similar to the Centennial Committee, is that we have people from the different areas of Boynton Beach that can say what they want to do for the safety of our roads. I understand you do not want to, to reach it out to dealing with the different homicides and violent crimes. That's fine. And so, we can start with just the road safety, but I don't want to limit it to pedestrians because it's the T-bone accidents that I'm more worried about, just like the person that lost their life riding a dirt bike. Yes, Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. I'm going to have the sentiment of the rest of the commissions. This is too broad to start off with. That's number one. Second of all, I'm just saying, we have people, when you open this up, and I'm just going to be honest with you, you have people coming out and talking about, I want a street common advice on my street. They've been down here already saying this here. I'm just saying, you know, you need to tackle one element of this. I'm just saying, this is a large puzzle, sir, that you're trying to put together, and you're trying to do too much at one time. I'm just saying, you need to take baby steps. You're making more work for the city. You're making more work for the individuals who's going to serve on this, and they're going to get burnt out. Do one thing at a time. I'm just saying, you know, the reason I got T-boned was hell, the guy didn't see the stop sign, and he was flying like hell. I'm just saying, you need law enforcement and stuff. I'm just saying, you know, pedestrian, you need to start off with first, and then, I'm just saying, then move from there to something else. You just can't take no giant step like this and say, let's do this overnight. It's not going to work like that, sir.
All right. Vice Mayor?
A question for staff, because in speaking to you guys, when we kind of adopted the resolution for Vision Zero, what, what's required in, in the Vision Zero plan as it relates to task forces? Because I know there's a component that this seems to kind of fit right into or a requirement, even if we do it in earnest. So, are there task forces required, or a task force required, as it relates to Vision Zero? That's what I've been.
I believe so, yeah. Rebecca Harvey, Sustainability Coordinator. Your question is, Commissioner, if, if a task force is required as part of a Vision Zero commitment?
Yeah, it is my understanding, when I was briefed by staff, when we, when we moved forward a couple meetings ago with.
Yeah.
Resolution on this, that there is a required component, if you would, with fidelity, implement the Vision Zero program.
It's absolutely something we're planning on doing. My understanding of Vision Zero, having been through the workshop and read all the materials, is it's a list of core elements and recommendations. They don't really say, this is required. They say, you know, here's what we recommend, and every community is a little bit different. And so, we're listening tonight to what our community's concerns are. But absolutely, that's the next step, after you all have now approved the resolution and committed to Vision Zero, is we would be putting together a task force that, I'm taking notes here, that will be, includes staff. The idea is collaborative, diverse collaboration, diverse stakeholders, so it includes professionals, community members, and policymakers. It spans transportation, public health, and law enforcement. And what I'm hearing tonight is a strong emphasis on community input and community members throughout the city of all the different neighborhoods. So, that's, I think we have our marching orders.
I think we need a motion, though. Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. My whole take is, you know, I understand what you just said there, but community input, you know, we always ask for communities to come down and give us their input, and a lot of times, we don't follow through. of times we don't follow through and communities like, especially like in District 2, they tired of giving input and not seeing no results and I'm just saying, you know, they said, what do they want us to do again? You know, we create these, you know, task forces that say we're going to do this, we create this and say this is what we want and then when we go to the community and present this and then we don't follow through and they like saying, you know, I thought y'all was going to do this, I'm just saying, you know, we have great ideas, we need to take baby steps, I'm just saying, I need more information before I even want to even consider this now.
And so, you know, the aspect of what we're dealing with is, is that are we going to ask for community involvement to deal, to make sure that our city streets are safer? You've heard it from one of our neighborhoods, Gulfview Harbor, that says Southwest 27th Avenue to Southwest 11th Street is too fast where people are just driving through stop signs and we have the ability as the city commission to say, you know what, we're going to spend the money to have those lighted stop signs that most of our neighbors have for areas so that people don't just blow through them. I remember when, was it in Delray, they had First Street and First Ave and they had a four-way stop and people weren't stopping and then they made sure that it was a lighted stop sign and that made a huge difference. And that is something that the Community Safety Task Force would do. In addition, they would also help tell us when there are light bulbs that are out because we have a lot of light poles that are not doing their job and our city staff is not responsible to check at night to see which light poles are not lighting our streets and that's something that we can ask the community to get more involved in. Correct, if you don't, if we don't ask the community to do anything, they won't sometimes, sometimes they will, they'll say that you're not working fast enough or you didn't listen to us, so why should we try again? The issue is, is that just because you fail once, you fail twice, doesn't mean you stop trying to make sure the city is safer. And so this is something that I feel we need as the city of Boynton Beach to make our citizens, residents and tourists safer when they're here. Vice Mayor?
So to staff, I assume other cities have already implemented Vision Zero and are ahead of us because maybe they did it a year or two or five years ago.
Correct.
Is there a way to bring us examples of what their respective task forces in whatever cities you can dig up have discussed, recommended? Because I'm not, again, my concern is scope and I just want to make sure that whatever a task force is doing is aligned with what traditionally Vision Zero task forces have done.
Absolutely, yes. I was looking for that a little bit today preparing, but there's so much information on the Vision Zero network of guidelines in a general sense, but that's the next step. At the workshop, we heard from West Palm Beach, we heard from Hillsborough County, so I have their, I can look at their presentations, but I'll call those folks, Fort Lauderdale also, Green Acres, I think, I don't know if they, they're probably about where we are.
Yeah, they just adopted, yeah.
Yeah, but there are some local cities as well as national cities, so I can get that information.
So, and pending further input, I would recommend, you know, if the mayor's amenable to this, in the effort of trying to move forward in the spirit of what you're talking about, but aligned with best practices as already demonstrated by other Vision Zero cities, if everyone is agreeable or majority is agreeable to get that best practice input from other examples so we know more specifically what Vision Zero is supposed to look like in terms of a task force, I'd be more comfortable, I think Commissioner McCray stated it similarly, with a little bit of background, to know how it exactly aligns with Vision Zero and what's been done and what's been successful and so forth.
Commissioner McCray?
Thank you, this is my final comment. Tonight we was presented with a perfect example of a task force that was formulated by their own community and that was INCO. Their task force said, let's get this problem with U-Haul taken care of, that was their task and they took care of it, they worried, you know, the city commissioners, they worried the city manager, they worried the PD department and said, hell, we're tired of it and I'm just saying, that's what a task force is all about, but the zero tolerance, you need to get us some more information, I cannot vote on this and let's move forward until I get some reading for myself, I'm just saying, things sound good when, you know, the mayor said, this is what I want to do, but hell, what do the city want to do? That's the way I'm going, I'm sorry, I can't move on this.
Do you want us to bring that back in a report to the commission?
Well, that's what the commission's asking for, the other aspects of the Vision Zero. So that's what we'll do.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Moving forward with Commissioner McCray, as requested, that the commission discuss the city's fees for special events.
Thank you. I want to go ahead and say, you know, I think this was kind of taken past out of context, but I want to thank y'all for giving me this information. My concern was that with what they was doing on Wednesday nights, you know, over at Sarah Sims, you know, and talking about the $300 for the police department and all that stuff and then after I heard that, then I finally heard again that they was like charging, getting money from the people out there and the food vendors, they're telling them that you got to give a donation for us to offset the cost of having the police department out there and I'm just saying, you know, if this is what they're doing behind our back, I don't feel comfortable saying, let's give them a break or anybody a break, I'm just saying, you know, I don't want to make what we do, it's something that is helping the city spend money and they turn around making a profit, sharing it for themselves, that's not fair to this community, not fair to the city, so I think we need to wait and get some more information and hear from the chief about what we need to go with this here, what's going on on Wednesday nights, because if you got something in place and it's working, seem like this is already working, I don't want to discuss it, I'm through with it.
Vice Mayor?
And I'll second the sentiment, I think, that Commissioner McCray just tried to provide. I have no problem looking at the special event permitting process and the requirements, but there's a paramount need to balance security and safety of the participants, of the residents surrounding any given park. So I'm not opposed to a discussion and looking at what other municipalities have as far as their requirements go, but again, I cautioned last meeting and I'll echo it again tonight, whatever we do, there needs to be a uniform standard across all city parks so that we're not just randomly waiving a fee or waiving a criteria requirement. If, you know, right now, as I understand, the police department, you know, has autonomy to determine if an event should require security because of the scope and size of the event, et cetera, I trust our police department to know that if they're going to have to go to an event to provide security because of the size of it, that they'll make that decision and I worry that us wading into this is getting in the weeds, it feels like more of an administrative decision. So, you know, if there's a discussion to be had about our requirements, that's okay, but I don't want us to start telling the police department whether or not security's necessary because we're not police and we don't know anything about that. They are police and they're going to have to deal with issues, so they should be the ones who tell us how that should go down.
So I was actually there at Boynton Strong's event last Wednesday, I forgot to mention that in my things that I do on a weekly basis. It was a great event and I think that we do need the police detail for all special events at Sarah Sims Park, whether it be a wedding, whether it be a birthday party, it's something that we want to make sure that the people that use, spend the $50 for 8,000 square feet, how big is, eight acres?
11 acres? 10, 11, it's big.
So you're talking hundreds of thousands of square feet, that there are police there making sure that the people there are safe and that's kind of where, working with Boynton Strong to make sure that they get their nonprofit status, that they can accept donations and so that they can grow as a organization for the benefit of the community, because they were asking for help with services and it's like, it's one thing to ask for help, but it's kind of getting to know the career source, the pathways to prosperity, it's the Urban League, the Literacy Coalition and if you tell them, hey, we got 100 people here every Wednesday night, you're going to get the organizations coming to you because they're always looking for people. And so, thank you for bringing this up, Commissioner McCray, and I look forward to continuing with the safety of our people. Moving on to item 12, legal, proposed ordinance number 20-003.
An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 18, Article 4, pensions for firefighters, amending Section 18180 to increase the maximum benefit cap beginning in 2020, amending Section 18182G to align the death benefit with the accrued benefit, amending Section 18182I of the city code to implement the conclusive cancer presumption established by Section 112, Boynton 1816 Florida statutes and the rebuttable disease presumption under Section 112.181181 and 175.231 Florida statutes, creating Section 18195 to provide for uniform drop benefit for newly hired firefighters, renumbering Sections 18-122 as Section 18-194 to govern drop benefits for grandfathered members, providing for inclusion in the code for severability for repealer and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Commissioner Pinzerga?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
Vote is 5-0.
All right.
Is there anything else for our future agenda?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, meeting is adjourned.